A special meeting for the City Council of the City of Hawthorne for July 19, 2022 at 6. Let's see the exact time. At 6:05 is now called to order. I'm going to ask, can you do the roll call, please, first?
Sure. Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Ray English. Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Proton Patterson.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
I'm going to ask Diane if you could just lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a brief invocation, too. Okay?
I gotta do it all. Come on, Wammy.
Stand, put your right hand over your heart, and ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic.
Where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Councilwoman Valentine, just so we can spread a brief invocation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Please bow our heads. Thank you, dear Lord, for bringing our city, moving our city forward, so that we are in the position of celebrating 100 years of achievement. Bless the efforts of this council to bring programs to the city which will benefit the residents throughout the future. Amen.
Amen. First order of business, oral communications?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Okay. Anybody wishing to address the City Council? Okay. That was your opportunity. Oral communication is close ordered. General matter, study session, cannabis ordinance and program, presentation by EJMA Planning and Development. Welcome, ladies, team. Okay? I don't know what the make of this is.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Ebony J. McGee Anderson, Director of EJMA Planning and Development. And my colleague Toni Forge will come through half of the presentation as well. But today, we're going to go through our proposed zoning, I'm sorry, our proposed cannabis program and the ordinance. Can you all hear me okay with the mask or?
Bring it down, since you're away from people over there.
Okay. Much better. We'll be able to walk you through what we've been discussing at our Working Group Committee and the policy decisions therein. Ultimately, next Tuesday, you will have the ordinance and the application processes, process and procedure before you formally during first reading. But we wanted to give you an overview today of the program and walk you through some of the items that we have been working through with the Working Committee. So I'll go ahead and get started with that. The first thing we'll talk about are the state licensing overview. We talked a lot about this in our workshops that we did, the four workshops that we did with the community. So we're not going to go into it in detail about the state license, all of the state licensing provisions. But we are going to give you then overview of what the state allows and what uses they allow. As we've mentioned before, the Department of Cannabis Control used to be several different agencies. Under cultivation, we had the Cal Cannabis Program governed by CDT, CDFA. We had manufacturing under CDPH, and then distribution, delivery, distribution, retail, delivery and testing was under the former Bureau of Cannabis Control. So now, DCC is one big agency that oversees all cannabis licensing and regulation. The first use that the state allows for cultivation is indoor, and that's what our ordinance will focus on. We will not have any outdoor or nurseries or mixed uses. We wanted to give you a couple of examples of what indoor facilities look like in case you haven't had a chance to visit one. These are all indoor grows in California and Colorado. Cultivation includes a mix of both small, medium and large, different type, size facilities. And those licenses can get different licenses based on the size at the state. But ultimately, cultivation is any activity including the, involving the planting or growing or harvesting of plants. The next use type is manufacturing or a manufacturing lab. This license type includes anything that creates a byproduct from cannabis. So any edibles that you see or concentrates are done through manufacturing. And then we have our distribution license, and it's pretty much like an Amazon warehouse. This is not to be confused with delivery, so distribution is business to business. And we both, we have both first and third party at the state, at the state level. So first party distribution is, I'm a producer, I'm a cultivator, I can, I can distribute my own product. Or I can send it to a third-party distributor that only handles third-party product. And then we have testing labs, and they're exactly what they say. They test the cannabis products because all cannabis products in the state of California have to have testing. And then finally, we have retail license. We also have a micro-business license at the state level. We're not getting too much into that because our ordinance doesn't include micro businesses. But the retail license is essentially exactly how it sounds. It's for cannabis retailers to sell goods through storefronts and also non-storefront or delivery. So there are two different types of retail licenses, storefront and delivery. And just to give you some overview of regulated shops, I know we've lived in the 215 era for quite some time, and we may not know what a regulated shop looked like. So we wanted to put some photos in here for you all to see. As you can see, they're very different than our 215 or now, or what we call our unregulated license, or unregulated shops without licenses. We have a lot of provisions in the ordinance that, that dictate what design elements you have to have in your dispensary or your retail shop. And here's a couple of others of existing regulated dispensaries. And again, here you can see all the products are properly labeled and packaged according to state regulations. And now we'll go into what proposed uses we have for the ordinance that we've been talking through in our Working Group Committee. We have spent quite a bit of time exploring the options. The council gave us the direction to look at seven different license, licensing types, including storefront retail, delivery, consumption, which I'd like to note that the state does not regulate onsite consumption, that's a local license only, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution and testing. After much discussion and feedback from our workshops, we propose to do a maximum of six licenses. That's five general retail storefront licenses and one designated for our social equity program, which we will get in shortly after this slide. We have delivery. It's a total of eight licenses, maximum of eight licenses. We want to reserve five of those for our general storefronts to add on. At the state level, those retailers are allowed to do delivery by right with that license. However, the city, the Working Group thought it would be best for the city to have a standalone delivery license, so you can stack your licenses. And with that in mind, there are five that would be allowed for those five selected retailers. There's also one social equity delivery license. And then there are two for, two additional delivery licenses. And those could be a combination of additional licenses that, for our top scorers or reserved for our outside of the city delivery. So the ordinance does speak to that. In this, in the proposed ordinance, no deliveries can happen in the city without a license. So even if you, if your business isn't located within Hawthorne, you still have to have a license to deliver here. And a lot of cities are doing that. The City of LA has that provision as well. And that allows the city to capitalize on those tax dollars and make sure that they can regulate businesses within the city as well. The next license type we have is the consumption license. We called it a consumption lounge, but it could be any type of onsite consumption business. So for example, if it was a cafe or some other type of business that wanted to be cannabis-focused, this would be the license that you would have to apply for. And that also includes retailers. And so we have a maximum of three licenses for consumption with, with a retail license. So you can stack them. And then we have three that would be for consumption only, so no retail sales. Again, that would look something like a lounge, or it could look something like a yoga studio that has a cannabis, cannabis-friendly yoga studio, for example. So two different types, but still a maximum of six of both of those. So again, we're saying maximum because the council can choose to select a candidate for all of these licenses or for part of them. Cultivation, manufacturing, distribution and testing, they, these ones, we did not put a cap on the number of licenses. And the reason for that was we did a real estate survey and we also did a zoning survey. And by limiting with the zoning provisions and the requirement, the development requirements, that we didn't have a lot of availability for these larger types of businesses. So we wanted to give the, the city the best shot at getting some of the best operators. And in order to do that, we would have to let them, let the real estate market kind of dictate where those, how many licenses we could accept. Again, all of these are proposed use, the proposed activities and the proposed number of licenses. Nothing has been finalized yet, but this is the committee's recommendation. And then, of course, there's the testing license. We definitely didn't want to put a cap on that. The state is very short on testing facilities. So having one in the Los Angeles region or more is really important. So we definitely didn't want to put a max on the number of testing sites that we could have here. Next, we'll get a little bit into zoning, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. But Toni is going to come and give a legislative update from the state on where we are with the proposed changes to the existing state regulations. This is a map, this is your existing zoning map. And you can see the bubbles around the different uses are both a 150-foot setback and a 500. And we'll go through those uses and let you know what those are. So our proposed sensitive uses mirror the state with a couple of bonuses. So we have public and private schools, so any school K through 12. We also have daycare facilities, both child and adult, and treatment and recovery centers. That's a bonus. And then we have parks as well, and that one's a bonus. We are proposing 500-foot setback buffer from schools and parks and 100-foot buffer from the additional sensitive uses that we've proposed.
Excuse me, the circles that you have there around the maps?
Yes.
What's the buffer? That's, oh, that's?
Those are the buffers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Toni Forge. I'm a cannabis attorney. The reason that we can do the 500-foot buffer is because we're still waiting for some updates from the state. We are going through now the whole DCC proposals. There's still time, let me pick this up, for a public comment. And that should be done by the time that we start this process. But under Business and Professions Code 26001, if the city approves it, if the city is fine with it, in essence, the state is fine with it. And so this language about the 600-foot buffer has been removed. It hasn't been replaced as of date. And so we're still waiting for some kind of guidance from the state. But from the Business Professions Code, not the Department of Cannabis Control, we know that we have the authority to do it under the 500-foot. Also, during the application requirement, there was a state attestation that said you had to be 600 feet from daycare, K, all those things we talked about before. Again, that language has been removed. And under 26, or excuse me, 16102 of the Business and Professions Codes, it basically says, if you comply with local ordinances, you're fine. So again, we're waiting for direction from the state. We anticipate we should get that after the public comments that are going on until August 2nd. And we're hoping to get finalized DCC regulations by the time we start with the application submittal process.
Through the chair. Can I ask why the state have removed the 600 feet?
That, yeah, I'll take that. That's a great question. And I think part of it is because of the land, the land uses. So we have smaller cities that are really dense, that might not be able to have any cannabis, any cannabis facilities due to those restrictive requirements. So the state, the state regulations have always said that they would approve a license under the application process if you're 600 feet away from a school or at a site that the local jurisdiction has approved. So that has been part of the regulation. It's been a default to go to in the early stages of cannabis, that 600-feet radius. But there are other jurisdictions that have other uses and other setbacks.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. So I just wanted to just ask a question. I had sent you an email in March recommending that certain places that would be restricted. So one of them, I was saying cannabis facilities would not be located on Hawthorne Boulevard, the Ocean Gate Center, the Costco Center, or the Business Center at 120th and Crenshaw. Two cannabis facilities should not be located near high-crime areas or addiction centers. And three, it would be preferable to set up a separate area in the industrial zone for all cannabis facilities. Were these considered?
Yes, we did consider those.
And what did you decide?
And we decided that these would be the best setbacks based on the analysis that we did. So we did work with the planning department to do that zoning analysis. We aren't putting anything, any cannabis in any of the overlay zones or any of the special use districts. We're sticking to that commercial zone and the manufacture, or the M zones and the C zones are pretty much the two places that will have cannabis. The treatment facility, the treatment facility and recovery centers were adopted, or at least for proposal, and they are one of the sensitive uses, as you suggested. And some of those other areas that you had in your email would already be thrown out based off of the overlay or if they're in, I believe there's, I think Greg, the planning director can talk more about your different zones. But I believe that there is a, there, we're only, we're only putting them in the commercial centers. And I don't think it includes the Costco. I think Greg could probably talk to that a little bit more.
We, we, we did not restrict the opportunity in, in the Costco area or the Ocean Gate because it would have been, it would have been excluding other areas with the same zoning that would have been ideal. So in our discussions, we decided to leave that question open for now. So our recommendation is to allow uses either in commercial zones or in industrial zones.
Thank you.
Yes, please continue, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get the PowerPoint doesn't want to work with me anymore. Okay, there we go. Okay, so next we'll go into the application process and the requirements. This is going to be more of a lengthy discussion because there is quite a bit of procedural information that we're going to go through. Again, you will have a copy of the ordinance, the application and the supplemental documents for your review before your, your next meeting, which is next Tuesday. But we did want to walk you through some of it before you start diving in. So the application process is going to be a phased process, in a sense, because the first phase of this is the screening. So all applications that are coming in are going to complete a screening application that'll include information like, we have an information form that identifies every applicant and owner. All, at least the applicants, in this case, in our application and our ordinance, they have, all the applicants have to be owners of the business. A cover letter that just explains what your business plan is. If you're proposing any interesting or new uses, which we actually do have additional scoring points for, which we'll get into a little later. But any innovative use, we want you to spell it out. There's also a proof of payment for the screening fee that's required prior to submittal. So part of that application intake process, we will allow applicants to submit in person. They need to pay first, and then we'll do intake here. We will have staff here and work with city staff to ensure that all the applications get taken in and there will be a completeness determination made. So ultimately, we will determine if everything in this application checklist has been submitted, yes or no. If everything is complete, then we will move the application on to the evaluation committee as complete. Each applicant will receive a letter on the spot that will say your application is complete, dated, signed, ready to go. And then if the application is deficient, for example, if they forget their cover letter, we will give them an incompleteness determination letter, and they can resubmit by the deadline online. So we will have two opportunities, so they don't have to come back down to the city. They are able to resubmit their application online, but the initial application and screening will be done in person. And then the final thing that the application will include is a detail of all the business plan and the design concept. And that's particularly important for retail. So we want to make sure that those retailers are providing a good design plan. We also have created a design guide that we will give to applicants that do get through the next phase of the process so that they have some ideas of what the city standards are. And we've pulled some of those provisions from the code, from the municipal code to include. So after the screening process is done, we, after the determination is made whether the application is complete or incomplete, then we will move them on to the screening phase of the application. That is where our evaluation committee that this body created or will create will oversee the process of reviewing and scoring the applications. So right now, the way that we have intended it or expect to intend it is it'll be a separate body that is elected here or by the chair. The chair will be elected by the mayor or appointed by the mayor, and then the members of that committee are selected. And I think that's one of your action items today. We did talk about it in our committee, in our committee, recommendations to the council would be possibly allowing the working group, the working group to have some, some type of oversight or influence over those other two bodies. So that's something that we can discuss at, or the next items, but just keeping it in perspective that the Working Group Committee is, does exist and will continue to exist throughout the process. And we're most familiar with working with that group. So we could talk about that a little bit later, but I just did want to put that in perspective, that there will be an evaluation committee that's elected with members that are selected by the council to review and score the application. So it won't necessarily be us. Next, we decided in the committee to come up with some criteria for our social equity benefits and our social equity program. The city did state in the initial cannabis conversations that social equity was a priority. And I'll have Toni talk a little bit more about the program requirements. But ultimately, we thought it was important to include social equity as part of our ordinance to respond to the disproportionate impacts on the war on drugs and the, and the locals here who have been affected by that. One of the things that came up in, in the committee that's really important to note is that the police department thought it was a great idea to focus our, or limit our social equity program to local residents, which is really important considering this is one of the areas that is disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. So that is one of the requirements for social equity in the City of Hawthorne. So this is not a state requirement, this is a local requirement. And we have proposed a 10-year residency as a Hawthorne resident as the first criteria to be eligible for social equity. And then we have three additional criteria to choose from. You have to meet two, one being the two. to choose from. You have to meet two, one being the 10-year residency requirement, and then you can have one of the other three, which includes a cannabis conviction or arrest before, or by, before November 8th, 2016, and five years of residency here in the city or another disproportionately impacted area as defined by the state between the years of 1980 and 1997. And we thought it was really important to specify those dates because that's the height of the war on drugs. And so we wanted to make sure that we were getting folks who were here and impacted during that time. And then the final one was a household income doesn't exceed the median, the median income for the city of Hawthorne, which right now it's about $72,000. So all of those requirements are, are eligibility criteria. They need to meet the 10-year residency and at least one other. Did you want to talk about the benefits?
Through the chair, quick question.
Yes.
Why, from the six retails, right, licensing that you guys are proposing, why just only one social equity program? Why?
So the, the way we came up with the six was there, this, the city is six square miles, and so we figured one per square mile rather than we were looking at before the population density. So we did it based on location. And the reason why we came up with one is because the five other one, the, the, the amount of services needed to get the businesses off the ground is pretty labor intensive. So the cost for, for assistance, offering technical assistance, helping through the application process, and then all the benefits that were, that Tony is going to go over now, providing those benefits is quite a cost. So we wanted to make sure that the businesses are viable, that they are sustainable, and that we can, we can keep them healthy in the city. And with only six to choose from, that's why we decided that one of them would be social equity. But we also, it's actually two because it's retail and delivery, those could be two different applicants.
All right, all right, thank you.
So I just wanted to expand on some of the things Ebony was saying. You see the last asterisk indicates that the social equity applicant would have to have a 70% interest in the business or above. There have been several social equity programs in the state. We have one in Long Beach, Los Angeles, Palm Springs, and it started in Oakland. One thing that we definitely see is a lot of predatory practices, and I see this in my everyday practice. It's a huge problem in Los Angeles. And so as an example, LA has two-tier social equity, equity interests. You can have a 51% or 33%. And we see that the lower the interest is, that the person has in their business, the more of this predatory practice of trying to get them out of their business because they don't have the majority of shares when it comes to voting, with termination, all of those things. And so our belief is if it's higher the equity and the equity with the social equity applicant stays with the license in the business, then we don't have all those predatory type of incidents that happens. And we're protecting the social equity person. We see a lot of MSOs, those are multi-state operators that come in, and they utilize the social equity applicant just for her or his license, and we're trying to prevent that. We really want Hawthorne residents to get the full effect of social equity to benefit them. The other part that we want with social equity is to have a local hiring requirement. We want to make sure that people hire Hawthorne residents. And so that's extremely important. So some of the benefits that we have for social equity, Dr., or Dr. Craig, Officer Craig has been really good on our working committee meeting. He indicated that social equity applicants would have a security consultation with the Hawthorne Police Department. Also, additional patrol support from the Hawthorne Police Department on the first year, complimentary admissions to operator workshops. We see with working with social equity applicants, people think it's just the money. It's really the education of how to operate a cannabis business. So we're hoping through these application workshops, we can assist our Hawthorne residents to do just that who apply. Also, technical assistance and support, and also access to cannabis professional vendor services. That's important to know who can help you with your business. Ebony and I have been in this space since 2016, and we can help compile that information so people can utilize that.
The next part of our program includes the community benefit program. So we have our social equity program as part of cannabis, and then we're also going to have a community benefit program. The social equity program is designed for the applicants or operators. Again, as Tony mentioned, we are really trying to stay local and focused more on up and coming businesses rather than multi-state operators or larger cannabis businesses for social equity. That's why we have the provisions that we have proposed. And our community benefit program is a separate and apart from the 5% tax. This, this fee would be a 2% of gross receipts on all sales across all the license types, or $25,000 annually for social equity licenses and $50,000 annually for general licenses, whichever is greater. So that is how, the formula for how we, we will calculate the fee. And that, those monies would go into a special account for community programming. We did, we, we agreed that we would leave all of the, the funding allocations to the city council. So it'll be up to your council how you utilize that money. But some of the things that came up were, you know, offering support services to the school district or schools, youth programming, some of those things may, may be used or may apply to use this money. But again, that would be something that the city council would determine at a later date. We also have a local hiring provision. So we are requiring all of the operators to have a goal of hiring locally and making sure that they have a living wage, and that's tied to the LA Living Wage Ordinance. So as that changes, that living wage would change annually, likely increase. We haven't seen too many decreases. But we have an ordinance already in place at the city of LA, and they do a pretty good job analyzing the living wage amount. So we are requiring that operators comply with that living wage and offer that to all residents in the city who would be applying for these jobs. We also have provisions in the scoring sheet for additional things like hiring veterans or other impacted groups. So we really are trying to get operators to really focus on community building, and that's why we have the community benefit program.
Quick question through the chair. Just want to comment on the community benefit program, the 2% of gross sales. So this is 2% on top of the 5% tax?
Correct.
So this would be essentially 7%, which you're proposing.
Yes, or the, if it's less than the, but that we have a floor. So it's $25,000 a year for social equity or 2%, whichever is higher. And so, and the same for the general would be $50,000 or 2%. But yes.
It could be as high, it could be as high as 7%.
Absolutely.
And so is, I'm sure you don't feel that that's too burdensome for one of these businesses to essentially having a 7% tax?
Well, we definitely thought for social equity, again, this is after their first year of business. So we did, we did have lots of conversations about the impact to the social equity businesses. And so we did have some provisions in there, you know, they get all of these benefits plus a delay of those, paying those fees. But no, we don't think that it is, it is burdensome. There are a lot of impact fees already in the city. If you were building any other type of major development, you would be paying school impact fees and other development impact fees. So we're seeing the community benefit fee, something like an impact fee to the community.
I think it's great. I'm just curious, what's the normal range of sales tax and say even gross receipts deal that, that you see in other cities?
You mean for retailers?
Mm-hmm.
I think it ranges quite a bit. Because in most of the other cities, if we take Los Angeles for an example, you're going to have small, one operator, just shops that are probably doing, you know, $500,000 a year. And then you're going to have major operators, some of the MSOs or multi-state operators that can be doing millions of dollars a year.
No, I mean, what's the typical range in tax that, that exists in other?
In tax or in fees? Because the community benefit fee, not every city has it, but we did study all of the permitting cities to see what their ranges are, and the 2% was within what a lot of them have. Some of them have flat fees. We've seen 25,000, we've seen 50,000, we've seen 100,000. They really do range quite a bit.
What's the range, what's the range of tax typically, cities levy?
I think that the highest we have is probably LA at 10%. And then some of the, some of the lower ones are anywhere from 1 to 2%.
Got it.
So it is quite, quite a range. But the high, LA is 10% on retail in addition to all the state excise taxes.
Miss, 2% would be on, let's say hypothetically, delivery, non-retail businesses as well?
This would be on all of the licensees, yes.
Okay, great.
Miss, so what is the living wage right now?
16.
16, no.
In, in LA.
So both the local hire provision and the living wage would be a part of the scoring sheets?
Yes. And the way that it's written in the score sheet is, we're looking at operators who either commit to what they're paying in other cit, in other cities, if they have, if they're an MSO or if they have other licenses, what they're paying now, if it's over the minimum. So if it's, let's say they're paying everybody $18, that we're going to look at that, we would want them to start at $18. If they're paying everywhere $14 everywhere else, then we would want them at least to commit to the $16.
So what's the penalty if they don't apply, abide by the living wage?
So the penalty would be, again, in our ordinance, these licenses come up for renewal every single year. So there isn't technically a penalty imposed, especially on local hiring and the living wage, but we will be monitoring for that. And if they are not performing in any of the ways that we specify in the ordinance, then their permit could be revocated or not renewed.
Every how often? Are they going to?
It's annually.
And what's the local hire provision?
That they hire locally, you mean the?
Yeah. But can you detail that for me?
That they make a commitment to hire locally from the city within a three-mile radius of the city limits. So there isn't a number. It isn't, you know, four employees or 50% or any of that.
I'm really not impressed by that one because we have a lot of people here who try to open up a business and try to gain favor with the council when they're proposing a business venture or so, in order to allow for us to, allow them to build. So, I mean, I really don't care about people outside of three miles, outside our limit. I would like to have something that's enforceable and that hires only Hawthorne residents. Because my job is not to, our job is not to get other people jobs. We have to make sure that our Hawthorne residents are working. So I would like the council maybe to consider just looking at that and seeing what kind of penalties we could have if they don't follow through with this. A little bit more stern and a little bit more restrictive. I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people here who might need work.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Local hire is very important. If there's something like that in place with the Marriott Hotels behind us, I'd like to know what we did to assure that the Marriott hired locally, because I know that was something in a provision that we made on a contract, that they have local hire. So if there's a percentage that we need to go higher to assure and guarantee local hire, perhaps it should be a 50% or 100% of local hire. And then if there are, say for instance, a regular review of the license, that's something that is going to be a given to assure that they're, they're adhering to the ordinance itself. But if we need to put a different percentage for the local hire guarantee, we could always do that. And, and, and I, 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 I agree with you so heartily because a lot of the businesses here that we have, that are new businesses, we assured here on the council and through your leadership that it, it was something across the board. So.
So I'm really not impressed by just a commitment. I don't believe in commitments because they, what are we going to do? They don't comply with this? We're gonna, you know, if we don't have anything that's strictly defined and that we can review or kind of audit and determine stuff, you know, it's not, so anybody's going to check the thing just to win favor with the council and to have their scores. You know, everybody's going to check that off. Everybody's going to check off the living wage. But it's, I think we just need to have that detailed and ensure that it's Hawthorne residents. I don't care about Inwood's residents, I don't care about Segundo's residents, I don't care about Lennox residents or Landale's or Gardenas, LA. I need to make sure that we have a percentage of employees that are from the city of Hawthorne.
We, we can definitely make that, we can make that change in, in the ordinance to set a goal. The reason why we didn't have it as an absolute, and we will be reviewing the licenses for monitoring, but the reasons why we don't have, have it as an absolute is because they are private businesses. And one of the issues that we have in cannabis is the high turnover rate. And so by requiring only Hawthorne residents, we may limit these businesses with their, especially right now with COVID, it's really difficult to even staff any business. And so requiring only Hawthorne residents may be burdensome. But I do think that it's important that we have some type of oversight for this.
I don't mean, and I don't mean you're smiling, but I was going to say, do you think it's going to be a hard thing to get some people to work in this cannabis type of thing?
You'd be surprised.
Just trying to lighten it up. But if we could just reassess that, please.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Some of the other operational requirements that we do have and, that we thought were really important as a body were the security plan, making sure that they, all these businesses are very much aligned with the commitment to safety that our PD is. And so we worked very close with our police department to make sure that we had a, a security plan in place that they support. And of course, we have our state requirements, which is 24-hour surveillance. We went even a step further than that to require them to be connected to the city police department surveillance system. And we, we're working with the police department security consultant to make sure that they have those consults for the social equity operators, but also for general operators to get on their surveillance system. So that's going to be really great for them to have direct access. If there is any issues at the business, they can respond right away.
To the chair, question?
Yep.
So I noticed that you have sales that can take place between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Did you survey the local stores in that, in the areas to see what their business hours are?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, what we did was, this is the state requirement. So it's a security plan. This is the state, the state provisions. And the state allows sales between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. But we did talk to the police department and to the planning department about local bars and lounges that exist in the city, and they're allowed to be open at 6:00 AM as well. So we followed that model.
Well, I was thinking more on the other end, the 10:00 PM, because if you're talking about a retail establishment, the small retail establishments that I'm familiar with, most of them close around 8:00 PM. So if you're going to have a cannabis establishment in a shopping center, for example, in an area where the other stores are closed at 8:00, and then that store is open at 10:00, I don't know. I think that's, that seems like it's, it's, it seems like it's out of line. It doesn't, it wouldn't fit with the, with the culture of that, that business center.
Well, I, I think we're going to be looking at the, the types of uses. And so we've compared cannabis to other like businesses. For example, the lounges, we compare to other lounges or hookah lounges, that sort of thing. And cannabis retail, we looked mostly at like tobacco or smoke shops and things of that nature. And we don't have any provisions on how late that, we don't have restrictions on how late they can operate. So we just defaulted to the state language.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have any feedback? I'm going to just, is that okay?
Oh, sure, of course. I don't have a opinion on this. It's a, I don't want to get involved with policy decisions. So in terms of the hours of restriction, these are ordinances. So if council can, if they have other ideas and if they're not favorable to one part or another, then certainly the council can move to be more restrictive. I, I would want the council, when they come up with reasoning, to come up with some specific reasons for being more restrictive. For instance, if you have a, if you're allowed to serve alcohol at a bar till 2:00 AM, then we should have some reason for restricting cannabis sales earlier than 10 o'clock, for instance. I, you know, but the state is requiring, not mandating 6 to 10, but that's the hours that's allowed under state law, and certainly the city want. that's the hours that's allowed under state law. And certainly if the city wanted to, if I council wanted to be more restrictive, I'm sure that you could be more restrictive. But the time to do it is now, so that when we have a draft ordinance, consideration, we.
I would, I would like to, to know what the, um, opinion of the police department would be on that as far as, because they would be the ones who would have to be monitoring the security, um, at these places.
I'll go, um,
The chair.
Myself, then Patterson and you, they're just caught, he was gonna say something, then just do it in that order. Um, I also like to see what the, uh, police department's, um, opinion is on this. Um, if they see any security reasons or anything. I think, uh, it's not a question that we're gonna, if, if for whatever we're gonna allow, it's just the time, just for the security aspect. This is a new thing that we have here. And I like to see it. And I'm just really curious, and I hate to say this almost sarcastic, you know, I'm probably gonna say something. What's the need for somebody to go pick up a little batch at six o'clock for their lunchtime fix or what?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
No, seriously, ma'am, I'm kinda asking.
No, I, I have great answers for that. And also in response to the police department, it was actually the police department representative in the committee that recommended the six to ten. And so the, the reason for the six AM is for our senior citizens usually. Um, that's the hours that they typically visit the, the stores more frequently. So we have surveyed that.
Uh, I'll probably have follow-up question. Go ahead.
You know, I, I was gonna say, I wouldn't be against, um, making hours more restrictive. But, um, what you just said really kind of addresses that, i- if the police department is fine from six to ten and, and, um, I'm very well aware that there's a large senior committee, our committee, community that, um, that, that buys and uses cannabis. I've had a lot of seniors in our, in our city, um, talk to me about that. And so that does make sense, though. Um, that's likely, I guess, the hours that, that they'll be uh, doing business. So, um, you know, so I don't really have anything else to say there.
I don't know, I just don't wanna pulse, hey, bring the police officer up here, but if you guys are saying so, that, uh, they kind of agreed to that or just?
To the chair.
Were amen- amenable? Would that be?
Meanable?
Amenable? Yeah, to that, that's, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, there was full discussion, um, on the board, but more importantly, I had, I had my reservations too with regards to six AM, with regards to lounges, with regards to just, you know, uh, a number of, of things. And the the discussion that we had and the response that we received back from the police department is, including member, um, Sergeant Craig, took it to the police department with our concerns and our questions. And it was those recommendations that we then implemented. So we have, you know, the police department involved, we have city attorney involved. And so those were kind of the things that we looked at. Um, but yes, there are existing businesses now, uh, that include, uh, bars, um, that include hookah lounges, et cetera, that are within lines to the hours that we've, uh, proposed. And then again, we, we stuck to the state's recommendations as well. We didn't, uh, take it any further. And more importantly, when businesses know they have to wrap up by ten, it usually starts at nine, that they start, you know, uh, getting folks, um, you know, out and, 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 and closing up. And that's, I think, stores in general, if it closes at ten, there's, you know, always giving you, um, a call out saying you have fifteen minutes, you know, before closing. Uh, last call for alcohol. We all heard that one. So just, uh, just, just an FYI, uh, but we did have the full discussion with the police department on the matter.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Um, next, we'll just go quickly through the application process. Um, the application deadline will be, um, or window will be thirty days. So from the date that we start accepting applications to the date, to the thirty-day, um, date, we'll be accepting application two days a week at the city, um, in person. And then recent middles for any of those deficient applications can happen any time of the day um, up into that, um, deadline date online. So again, we'll have a two-part submission process in, in person. You pay your fees and submit your application materials and you will be told right on the spot if you are complete or incomplete. If you're incomplete, you have, um, up into that deadline to cure your applicant, your deficiencies and resubmit online. So you do not have to come back down to city hall, although you can. And that, um, we will have a staff person on site Tuesdays and Thursdays from ten to two. Those are the tentative times. But again, everything will be finalized in the application, um, information packet posted online. We will have updated FAQs for any questions that continue to come in. We will continue to update the website. But all of this information will be housed, um, prior to submission. So prior to we, to the, um, submission window opening. Next, once the, the applications are comple- are de- determined that they are complete, those complete applications will go on to the evaluation committee for scoring. If that we still have incomplete applications, the ordinance is very clear that incomplete applications will not be scored. So, um, it, it behooves everyone to submit a complete application and we will have lots of materials on um, what's required and what is going to be screened, so that applicants can, um, prepare their applications completely. And then those top applications from the evaluation committee, they will use the scoring criteria that we have set. Um, and those, that criteria includes a range of things, including our design, um, community programming, um, and various other aspects that's outlined in the ordinance. And again, all of that will be before you next week. Um, but those top applicants that will be scored will go on, um, to the, the, um, the city council for selection. So one of the things that we did in the ordinance was set those number of licenses. So like I said earlier, we have six retail, five of which are general, one is social equity. Those would be your top applicants. So we would take the top six applicants, the top three applicants. Whatever those numbers are that we're, um, allocating the maximum number of licenses, those would be the candidates. Um, the city council ultimately would approve them to move forward to get any type of planning entitlement, building approvals, or ultimately their city license, their city business license. Some of the uses in the ordinance right now will require a conditional use permit because they're like in nature to other uses that require a conditional use permit. Those applications would go through the normal planning process like any other development application that requires a conditional use permit and then circle back to get that business license. For those that do not require a business license, they would move through the process um, with the planning clearances, the building approvals, and then ultimately their business license. And then ultimately their state license. No operator can operate without those two items. They need both a local license or permit, some type of local authorization, and your city license. I'm sorry, your state license. Both of those things need to be in hand before any operator can operate. So we do have quite a bit of time before, um, before we have businesses operating. So it seems like it's fast and there's a short window, but the thirty-day application window will just give us, um, the applications that we will be screening and processing probably for several months.
To the chair. Yes. I have a common question. Um, what do you, I understand that from the evaluation scoring process, so let's say with retail, let's say we, we allow six licenses, you're saying that the, you'll move the top six on, onto the council for approval. Um, I would like to suggest maybe having just a minimum bar for applicants. And all applicants that cross that minimum bar, the same way we did with, um, when we were, um, did RFP for, for the, this, uh, consulting position that you have. Everybody that meets a minimum bar goes on to the council and then let the council, um, through whatever process we choose, award whatever amount of licenses that we choose to award. I don't know how everybody feels about that.
Go ahead.
To the chair. Thanks. Um, so similar to, um, West Hollywood, uh, the way they, they did it, and Ebony, uh, or, uh, Ms. Anderson, uh, let me know if I'm maybe saying something wrong. Um, however, they had a score, a scoring that was like the top ten. I, I don't remember exactly how many applicants they had, but there was a top number. And then, um, from that top number, um, there was a, uh, because, you know, ultimately, the, the, the committee is, is not gonna have the last say. It's gonna be the council, right? But it would be like the top ten, say for instance, applicants that would have a scoring component to it, that is based off of the, the, the whole application itself and how it scored with regards to some of the things that we made mention here. And if you wanna elaborate a little bit more on what would be considered, like, say for instance, West Hollywood's way?
So the West Hollywood model is which we follow, which was the direction from the council. They actually do not, they awarded eight licenses and they had the top eight applicants. So it was however many licenses they had, that's the top applicant, applicants. But West Hollywood was very clear that they didn't want the council as the selection committee. Um, so they had this evaluation committee that just scored the application separate and apart from the council, and the council accepted those recommendations. Um, one of the things that we did talk about in our working group, though, was allowing, let's say if we had six licenses, we would accept the top maybe eight. The top eight scores. So that way, if there was anything in the application, um, that came up during council or some, you know, any, or they didn't meet some of the provisions or the requirements, or became, didn't pay, or any of those things, we would have backups. But that could definitely be the, the case that we take the top, let's say, ten or maybe eight. And then the council chooses from those eight if we wanna put the selection entirely into the, um, the, the, um, councils.
Well, a cou- couple things. So one, what we do with the licenses that we don't have a, a maximum amount.
So those, so if we, let, let's say we get only two, um, retail applications. That's very far-fetched, but let's just play with that scenario for a second. And we have six licenses. There are two options. The, the city can not fill those other four licenses or we can open it, we can reopen it to select more applications. And the, and the zoning, or I'm sorry, the, the cannabis ordinance states that.
I mean, like for instance, distribution, right? There's no cap proposed.
No cap.
So how many applicants would we see? If three thousand apply, would we see all three thousand?
We'd see all three thousand, yes.
So, um, but when it comes to retail, since we're only looking at, uh, giving fi- six licenses. So the thought process was the, uh, scoring committee would be essentially the selection committee.
Yes, but.
My concern is that I, um, an applicant who didn't score in the top whatever, right, will now try to have issue with that scoring process.
Well, first, we're not capping any application submissions. So if we get five hundred applicants, we would screen all five hundred applicants in any of the categories. Um, but yes, you would have to, you would have to score in the top ranking, whatever that is. Um, and West Hollywood did it that way versus just a minimum threshold so that they could rank them for that, that very reason, so that they could have the top eight. And those are the folks who would get the license. And it's, it's less discretionary in that way, um, for the council at least. But yes, the way that it's modeled right now, you're absolutely correct. The evaluation committee that is, the, the chair would be appointed by the, by the mayor and the members of that committee would ultimately be determined by the council. That committee would be doing the review and scoring.
So the question becomes, who do we want to really make the selection? The scoring committee or the council?
More or less. Um, right now, the evaluation committee language does state that anyone who's part of that committee needs to have some working knowledge of government regulations and government operations. So we're looking at city staff members, um, and or individuals from, um, the industry who do not have a stake in any licensing in the city. So those requirements are the, the brief, the overview, the framework that we're working within. But, um, the action items today before you, you will be determining what ultimately those committees look like. Um, but everything will come back to the council in one way or another for approval.
Well, I would like to suggest at least if there's, uh, that more than, let's say if there's six licenses available, there are more than six applicants are recommended. So I mean, I don't know how the council.
Sure.
Feels about that.
I have a quick comment on that. I think you even led on to it in the beginning, having a minimum bar.
Minimum threshold?
Of, of thresholds. Say for example, you know, there's clearly, um, say there's five, whatever the set number is, but there's about half that amount that meets, that passes that threshold. All right? That, I wouldn't want to bring these people who don't have the minimum qualifications up in order to satisfy that set number if they don't even minimally qualified to be able to be uh, players in the city of Hawthorne. I just think we're just, uh, that opens it up to people who aren't qualified.
Yeah, and we can absolutely have both. We could have a floor, um, saying you need to have a certain number of points. And then from those do a ranking system. That's definitely something in your purview to, to set up.
Yeah, okay, so we could just. Go ahead. To the chair. Uh, I think, uh, the city manager and then you.
Right, go ahead.
Ms. Anderson, if you can, uh, elaborate on the two committees that we're asking for guidance on and what their duties would be. I think one thing we haven't mentioned is the oversight committee, which we're wanting to form. If you can go into detail what that committee would look like and what their duties would, uh, entail.
Yes, and we.
One second question to that. Uh, your anticipation of applications for retail, if you had to estimate for a city of this size, how many applications do you anticipate the city, um, obtaining?
Well, um, the city of West Hollywood received over three hundred applications from about a hundred and I believe a hundred and twelve different applicants, which means that some of them submitted multiple applications. The ordinance does not allow, um, any applicant to apply for more than one type of license. So uh, that means you can stack licenses or have it integrated business. You can have retail and delivery and cultivation and manufacturing. You can have all these different licenses, but you couldn't have, like, double, you couldn't double dip. So you couldn't have two retail licenses or two manufacturing. So we're looking at, um, if we're using West Hollywood as a model, they've received three hundred individual use type applications. We're modeled the same way from about a hundred and twelve different applicants. Um, you're roughly the same size and you're allowing roughly the same uses, so I would anticipate roughly the same turnout. Um, as far as the ask, ad hoc committees, that's actually the next slide, so I can move right into that, um, Mr. City Manager, and go into those committees. The city council actually decided that, um, you all would like to form two different ad hoc committees, um, in addition to our working group committee. And those two committees are the applicant, uh, application evaluation committee and the cannabis oversight committee. So one of the tasks before us in the working group was to determine, um, an, a scope for both of those committees and what they would be doing. Um, so the evaluation committee, we did model just, um, just after, uh, the city of West Hollywood. And one of the reasons why the cities wanted to remove the selection process in, um, from the city council is to avoid any of these questions about misconduct or, um, you know, favoritism, any of these things, which ultimately the oversight committee will investigate. But moving on to the evaluation committee, one of the things that you all have been discussing is why, um, we're using the scoring criteria rather than just bringing it and making a discretionary action. And that's one of the reasons why West Hollywood did that. Um, they were pretty successful in that. We have seen lots of challenges and lawsuits, um, from cannabis. And so taking it out of elected's hands was one of the missions for West Hollywood and they were successful. Um, but there is no provision that specifies how you have to do this process. So we can, we can definitely tailor it to the wishes and the needs of the city. Um, the application evaluation committee would review and score all the cannabis applications and determine, determining those top scoring applicants based on the criteria that you all will be approving, uh, um, with the ordinance and as well as the selection criteria, um, score sheet. And, uh, the members are, there will be five members. West Hollywood had three members. Um, but your council, um, does five for ad hoc committees, so both will have five members. The cannabis oversight committee would investigate concerns or complaints regarding the application process. So, um, some of those committee members may be making allegations about staff, the council, consultants, um, applicants. All of those things would be investigated by this committee, so it's important that that committee doesn't have any interest in the city or in the process. And they also make recommendations to the council regarding that misconduct. So, um, we have some proposed penalties or consequences. Um, but ultimately, it will be the cannabis oversight committee's job to review all of those, or review and investigate any of those claims and then make a recommendation to the council on how, um, to handle those, um, those situations.
To the chair.
Yes.
So, so that oversized committee also could be like the, uh, appeal committee, that if somebody wants to appeal, that they didn't get a fair score or whatever?
So actually, your ordinance does actually outline what an appeal process looks like. And because most of these will be going through some type of planning process and they will be getting some type of planning permit or entitlement, they would need to follow that appeal process. Um, the oversight committee would be more so, um, pers- you know, things that had to do with reviewing the process. So like malfeasance or misconduct, um, bribery, those kind of things would be reported to the oversight committee.
And, and my next question, because since. And, and my next question, because since we were talking about the um, application, have the ad hoc committee come up with the uh, a number? Let's say for example, how much is it gonna cost for somebody to submit the application?
Yes, we did. And what we did was we used the um, the proposed budget that we did with our consulting contract. Um, we used that as the baseline and then added on the administrative costs to the city for oversight and some of the um, clerical work that needs to happen. So we did come up with that, that fee and it's about twelve thousand three hundred dollars. Per applica- per activity or application. Um, app, the requirements do allow for applicants to submit an application, um, one complete application for all of their different uses. They can, they can break it down that way, but they still have to pay a fee for every license type. Because each license type is a business license, if that makes sense.
To the chair. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Anderson, can you talk a little bit about uh, the application and what's gonna be required when an individual walks in here and gets uh, gets escorted to the cashier's office to pay first before submittal?
Yes.
How much of those fees are gonna cost uh, individually?
So that, that is the twelve thousand three hundred dollars is the initial application fee for the ac- application screening process. So that pays for staff time to review the applications, accept the applications, process the applications, send out any um, notices. Again, we're doing the um, the workshop where operators can get information about the process. We're helping, that includes the social equity, technical assistance. Um, and all of that is included in that fee and that cost breakdown was pro- provided in the original draft budget, so we did stick to that. Um, we did not deviate. Um, but to walk you through that process, if I were an applicant, I would be coming in with my complete application. I would sit with the designated staff member who's doing the intake, the intake process. Each application gets a number. Um, you would sit down with the plan checker or reviewer going through each individual item on a checklist, on the application requirements. The application checklist is part of the application information packet. Again, you will get all of this on Tuesday to, for your review. Um, but we did want to make the process as fair as possible, so we have been um, pretty tight about releasing documents to the public until they're finalized. Um, so everyone will be able to see the drafts of those for you to review on Tuesday. Um, but you'd go through that application package. If everything is complete in the application packet, the applicant signs saying that everything that they submitted is what the plan checker or the intake coordinator received. And they sign it, an attestation saying such. They also sign a disclosure form saying that they are not allowed to communicate with anybody on the evaluation committee. They are always allowed to talk to their public officials, but again, there is a disclosure saying the public officials, you know, can't talk about the application processes. They're not directly involved with it. Um, we have a full page of disclosures from the attorney, so they will have to sign that disclosure. Understanding, stating that they understand the process. Um, and the penalty for violating that process, um, commun- communicating with any, anyone outside of the Hawthorne designated method, which is the email address, can um, result and will result in termination of your application. So we do have a penalty for that, Mr. Mayor. Um, we are taking it very seriously. Um, so we have that disclosure on every form, every paper um, to make sure, and on the website, just to make sure that um, everyone knows that they have to follow the process. Once that's done, they're gonna go over to, once they have a number, they have paid, we have receipt. Then they'll go on to that um, that, that scoring committee or the, the application evaluation committee. Um, so it will be a fairly smooth process. I will tell you, if we are getting applicant, we will get applications probably on the very first day to the very last day. Um, and the lines will be rather long, I would, I would guess. And so we will have staff here to kind of manage that process. We'll be at the, I believe at the city attorney's, um, the prosecution office is where we plan to be um, processing the intake applications. Um, it is a robust um, process, but we are, we do plan to make it pretty smooth sailing for the applicants as, as easy as we can possibly make it.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, City Manager, ma'am, so today's meeting was uh, more of an informative, informative first draft presentation to us?
Yes.
That we'll be able to debate or discuss at the regular city council meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good.
Just, I just wanted to clarify one thing, even though the, the scoring process may be done at the location of the city prosecutor's office, because most of the daytime, no one's there because they're in court. None of the prosecutors will take part in any of this.
To the chair. And the reason I ask that is just so that I could um, read this and give it a fair look and fair questions, just to make sure that like I have my um, I's dotted and my T's crossed with any questions and that they're kind of uh, solid questions that aren't just gonna be wasting any, everybody's time.
Absolutely, and we'll have a full report. We'll have for our council meeting um, next week. It won't be a study section, it'll be a regular session, so you'll have your normal um, packets with all the information. And yes, we'll take any questions or concerns you have then.
Uh, co- two things, I just wanna suggest that we remove the license allowance lounges. I don't think that's something that I'll be ready for. Um, and the second thing is, I mean, that's my suggestion, but the other thing is though, so if, if we have the same experience as West Hollywood and let's say we have roughly three hundred applicants and the application fee is twelve thousand three hundred, you're saying we're, we're, we may uh, see about north of three point six million in application fees over a thirty day period?
Possibly.
Lot of money.
Um, but.
Ms. Anderson, if you can explain that your fees are tied into that?
Yeah, yeah, so the proposed budget is based on the number of applicant, applications. We anticipated conservatively thirty because um, we didn't know how many uses you were gonna allow. What you will be act, the actions you'll be taking next, um, separate from this presentation is on the, the number of license types that you will allow. Now remember, West Hollywood also allowed lounges in two different forms. That's a huge attraction. So you may not see the same turnout if you remove one or some of those uses, so just keep that in mind. Each of those uses um, are gonna bring in a certain demographic of the cannabis community and potential applicants. Um, but again, we, we proposed all seven that you asked all of, of the committee to review, but that action will be taken next. That's the next agenda item, um, whether or not we will accept all seven. So it may not be the three million dollars, but it will be whatever the applications are.
Couple bucks.
Yeah.
So, and I do understand that, that you, uh, your compensation is essentially from the application fees. That the
Absolutely.
Proposal that we accepted is there's really no net cost to the city, that you, you know.
Full cost recovery, yes.
So if we have full cost recovery, whatever, that, that checks that we've written you, we'd be reimbursed through the application process.
Absolutely. And that's the way that we've designed it throughout every stage, to make sure that none of the costs exceed um, the anticipated income from, or revenue from the application process.
So the application process, not the sales tax or the, the other two percent, but the application process
Just the application.
Solely would cover whatever um, expense, right, that's incurred from your services.
Absolutely.
To the chair.
Uh, yeah, real.
No, it goes to Ms. English, tell me.
Look, um, I know that you made a suggestion on something to remove. Um, this is the first time I see the report from the working committee. I purposely didn't go to the meetings because I didn't wanna, you know, anybody to see me there and I didn't observe anything. This is my first time. Uh, and I think at the next meeting, we could uh, look at the uses. Um, but, I mean, I, I agree with Mayor Protem outright at this point, the consumption aspect, I would be ready to take that off.
Okay.
Today. And uh, but everything else, I would like to discuss details and then maybe the feasibility of it, maybe yes or no on whatever and details. I mean, that's just my opinion. Um, if everybody decides to just wanna make this, these, these decisions today. But outright, the consumption aspect, I just, you know, I'd like to take it off today.
I would agree with you that we should wait and make the decision, you know, we, we should have a chance to mull this over and review this again. Not make the decisions today, but I would, I would agree with removing the lounge aspect.
The chair.
Sir.
Um, the, the reason why we wanna take this up as a direction action item for different types of licenses today is because the consultants wanna bring a, uh, introduce the ordinance at the next council meeting. The ordinance will be determined by which of the licenses that the council will approve today.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I understand though, but this is my first time looking at this. I know we said, hey, let's see what the feasibility is. I need time to look this over and ask questions, just to look at the details, find maybe numbers. Um, like I said outright, I know that the consumption part, I never really was in favor of that. I, I do hear a colleague that's willing to third one. I think we can make that decision, but the, the specific details, I need to study it.
So in, in terms of that, then I'll, I'll let the consultants know that if council decides to delay the vote on the licensing, then we'll have to delay the introduction of the ordinance.
Absolutely.
And, and to the chair.
But not for any other reason, it's just like, you know, I, I need to do it, go ahead.
Let me tell you that under twenty-six, I'm not gonna be here.
Oh, pues ahí está, there you go.
I'm not, I'm not gonna be here under twenty-six.
So then everybody gets an opportunity to study it, so it works out.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, one of the things that we wanted to do during the study section is give you that, all that opportunity to ask any questions, to go over some of the deliberation we had as the working, working group. And that's why we wanted to pull all seven uses um, with our recommendations for the numbers, so that we can have that um, dialogue. And then take that action is the next action item in the agenda. Um, however, if this, if the.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be able to do it on twenty-six anyway, so.
Yeah, so that was gonna say, so if we need to move the hearing anyway, we're gonna have to readjust the, the timeline, which is, is okay too. What we wanted to do is just make sure that we report it back to the council, so you all can see what progress we have made, what the issues that um, have come up thus far from the four uh, community outreach meetings, as well as feedback from the community that we've received from online, um, the online email address and the things that have come up with the discussion of the committee members. And these, this is where we have all agreed thus far, but it's in no way an intent to um, solidify any of these uses or um, you know, not give you an opportunity to review any of them. So I'm happy, Tony and I are here, we're happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, the reason why the consumption license is a big one um, is because there aren't a lot of places to consume cannabis. And if we're thinking about social equity, and we talked about this, I think, before in one of the meetings, um, when we're looking at renters um, and populations that may not have um, home ownership, which is really the only place you can legally smoke and in your, in a private um, residence or a private facility, that we have an access issue. So consumption lounges or consumption areas, because they're not all lounges, some of them are inside of dispensaries. Like I said, we have the ability to do other interesting and unique um, uses with cannabis, not just um, sell it and smoke it, but there are a lot of other different uses. Um, West Hollywood has an edible only um, area, so you can have just edibles. Um, there's a lot of different thi- different types of uses and business types that we might be able to get in the city from this. Um, I do believe that we've seen things really interesting like cannabis friendly hotels and different development um, opportunities. So as a city that's looking at cannabis as an economic development initiative, allowing the more uses, you're gonna get a more vi- diverse range of new and innovative uses. And so that's why we put, put all of them in there.
Right, I appreciate that, actually. It definitely helps to kind of sway my perspective. One thing that I, I'm personally interested in is, is, I guess, more of a a restaurant or even a, or even a lounge, like a cigar lounge, not necessarily interested in. Um, I think there's no problem with maybe having an opportunity to, I guess, buy some edibles and consume them on the property and be able to be there in a, in a safe environment to do so. Um, but I don't know what liability will exist for that business or even the city if they leave that facility and they're not, and they are impaired, to impaired to drive.
It would be the same liability as having a restaurant that serves alcohol. Um, or alcohol or beer, wine or alcohol sales, the same provisions. The cannabis regulations are very much mirrored after the A B C regulation. So they're very like in nature when it comes to um, what, the provisions of what you can and cannot do. Um, and the, the regulations do not allow for overconsumption or at least in the, um, in the ordinance. We have the same responsibility for a bartender, if you will, that you would a bartender. So overconsumption, overpouring, all of those things are still um, are still provisions within the ordinance that we can restrict. And so with the consumption areas or consumption lounges or consumption in general, it's a local jurisdiction thing. So it's something that you can tailor. Um, West Hollywood did have edibles only. There was an edible only license. Um, so that per, per um, prevents folks from smoking, because sometimes that's an issue. Um, the other thing that lounges do though is help with the secondhand smoke. So we have a sm- secondhand smoke ordinance here that says, hey, we don't want people smoking in public. Um, you have to follow state laws when smoking, but as we all know, most people do not adhere to those rules. Um, because there's no, there's not a, a central location. So having locations where people can go consume actually pulls them off of public spaces and lessens that ref- that enforcement, um, those are enforcement resources because there is a designated place for, for folks to go. Um, but like I said, you can, we can tailor it to.
There are some great, great arguments. I, I would need a lot more education as to options to before I would want to, personally, we want to give one of those licenses out. Because I don't know, you know, what standards to have, what, what to look out for, what to say I'm okay with or not okay with, right? Because when I hear that, I just think of like a cigar lounge. And our, our rest, I don't know, restaurant lounge, I'm not necessarily interested in, and what first came to my mind. So if there are some other options, alternatives, there's some, you know, some creative ways to utilize that license in a way that I would, you know, be okay with, I'd be very interested in, in being educated about what those options are. Uh, I'd be willing to support everything else, but that at this point, not saying that it's totally off the table anymore, but you know, I still would need a lot more kind of um, you know, the information about, you know, how we, I would be willing to tailor that particular license. That's one. Two, before I forget to, to get it out though. Um, I would actually wanna suggest a cap on cultivation as well. Um, and just, you know, I, I, I think you make a good point. Like our industrial um, part of Hawthorne has very, very low vacancy. Um, I mean, I first got elected as city treasurer, there's about thirty percent vacancy in our industrial park. Now it's probably like a less than five percent. Only person that's really going to operate in our industrial area is a, a business that is well capitalized. Um, because they're gonna be paying premium rents to compete with SpaceX and a lot of these other areas are, are companies that like to be around SpaceX. Um, and compete with, you know, Amazon and, and, and um, um, Tesla who are looking for spaces in order to park their vehicles and occupy, especially if you're gonna buy something as well, it's gonna be at a premium, premium amount. So I don't think that we would hurt anything by having a restrictive of, of those. Um, but things may change in the future for whatever reason, right? Like Tesla, not Tesla, but SpaceX may say, we wanna be in a more, and all those companies leave and our vacancy rate, you know, skyrockets to fifty percent. Um, I don't want, now it's wide open for, you know, fifty cultivation. Of course, we have, they have to apply and we have to say yes or no, blah, 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 blah. But um, I probably still would be comfortable with having a restriction on, especially cultivation though. Um, the other ones, uh, you know, I'd love that as many testing is, wanna come into our city and manufacturing and all that stuff. But probably cultivation, I probably wanna restrict that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that either.
Alright, so um, you know, uh, I'd like to finalize, start finalizing the meeting and uh, not that I want, it's just that it gives us an opportunity, because this is the first time I actually see the details, the numbers that you guys are suggesting. So thank you for putting that work into this stuff. And I just kind of wanted to sit and simmer and uh, study some of the uh, you know, some of the aspects of the social equity, some of the general storefront versus non-storefront without retail, with retailized. I mean, it's only fair and we know that Councilmember Montero's not gonna be here for the next meeting, so he wouldn't get an opportunity to give feedback and to make a decision with us, so it's only right. Um, ultimately, we will be making decisions. So uh, uh, do we, do we wanna do anything with regards to the, to the, I mean, to that item?
I mean, I kinda wanna just.
Or do we just?
Pull that to the side and, and kind of handle that separately, kind of, but I think maybe we should probably have another uh, working committee meeting.
On the consumption aspect.
Yeah, on the consumption, I think, I really just need kind of more information about that to have more of a final position. I think we probably need another working committee or one of these sessions.
Go ahead, and then uh, Councilman will try.
Thank you, Mayor. So all these items that are on there is uh, through the process of the city council that told us to look at all of them, right? So what you're seeing is from back in February, March, uh, city council meetings, that uh, lounge was even thrown in there. I had a restriction, but lounge was thrown in there. So um, keep in mind that LA County is looking at a cannabis program and will be implementing cannabis. Keep in mind that they're gonna be looking at social equity. Keep in mind that they're gonna be looking at the same licenses that you see uh, Keep in mind that they're gonna be looking at the same licenses that you see, a proposed license that you see here. So keep that in mind, because we butt L.A. County, including one hundred and thirty-fifth, Crenshaw. So keep in mind of where L.A. County is and lies. So where you might say you're not comfortable with, don't be surprised if the county does. Moreover, moreover, um, the, the other aspect to this is where there's money to be made is to look at everything, right? And we're looking at revenue streams. I'm good with whatever this council chooses collectively. However, I want to also propose, in the future, depending on how these businesses are doing, should there be a proposal to maybe bring a lounge or something like this, that it's some, it's something that we will definitely entertain, take a look at. But the Oversight Committee wouldn't be at that point, you know, still in, in, in a position to give you recommendations, suggestions, because at this point, when this ordinance is finalized, I think the committee will be no more. But having said that, just keep in mind of some of the things that are coming down in the pipelines that are county-related and all of those other things that, that's why we're, we're, we're looking at cannabis, to make it legal here in the city of Hawthorne, and to assure that we're regulating it and making it a good cannabis program, where we're gonna be also, you know, reviewing, implementing, and more importantly, regulating, and, and or not, when it comes to, you know, some of those licenses, maybe at some point, you know, being, being put through a process that they have to be reviewed, right? We don't want that, but that's, it, all of that's for this reason that we're doing this.
Thank you for the work you did with the committee. So let's start kind of wrapping up, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I actually would like to see more ideas about this consumption, you know, like you were talking about, like the mayor pro temp suggests, to give us like a rap sheet on, on, on a different type of consumption. Because I think the consumption could be an area that could attract some people coming to our city, and then they can, you know, not just go to the consumption place, but also they can dine and stay in the hotels, especially if those are coming out overseas for the SoFi Stadium, you know, World Cup soccer, Olympics. So it would be a destination for people to say, oh, look, Hawthorne has something that we would like to go and experiment, right? So just to keep the open mind that it could be an attractive business if it's included in all our, our, our license, okay? And my question about when the application is going to be brought in, right, at, at, to the city attorney's office, who is the staff, is your staff or our staff?
It's our staff that will be doing the intake, the intaking, but we will be working with city staff to make sure that the fees are paid and all of the application materials are, are adequate. So it'll be a combination, and that's one of the things that we had in the original scope and budget, is that we would work in consultation with the planning department or city staff on some of these things to reduce costs. So it will be, it will be a combination. Mr. Mayor, if I might, just respond to some of the things about the, about the consumption lounge. One of the things that we wanted to do is bring every, a comprehensive ordinance, but we do have the ability to restrict when those applications come in. So we, one of the ideas on the table was to, to take retail first. So do a, a phased process where we're taking the, the retail applications first, and through that, we could, we could also do something like that with consumption. Maybe we have it in the ordinance as a potential use, but we don't accept any applications until the council has done further research or study, and we can limit that. We can limit the uses, like what types of lounges and/or other consumption uses. We can determine where they go, we can make a lot of provisions to address any concerns that you all have. So I just want to put that out there, because we aren't tied to any of the provisions of state law specifically for consumption, since it's a local land use issue. It's, it's at your pleasure what we can, what we can produce. So I just wanted to throw that out there for all of you.
And, uh, Mr. S- I just kinda wanna wrap up the meeting. And Mr. City Attorney, this is for you, sir. So we have the, so the whole point was to expose our city council representative and the four members of the ad hoc committee to a view of all the seven types of uses. And you guys did a, a great job of having the meetings and talking amongst each other. So you've presented what the parameters would be and how it will look within our city, based on our maps, our demographics, et cetera. So that's good, this is our first exposure to it, guided with EJMA. Any of these, um, the way it sounds, and I just would like for you to confirm or say no, Mr. City Attorney, is that we could take a select number of these and start, say, hey, we're gonna move forward with these three, and not approve the other ones, and set those into our land use, into our use policy, right? And then we can have those in reserve, and in a year, if we like to implement those and we're ready, and it's the community's desire, or the, the city council feels that it's appropriate, because we have more information, we could bring elements of these, they're already packaged, ready to implement that. Is that true, Mr. City Attorney?
So.
Because I, the thing is.
You're saying we can pass it, we don't necessarily have to accept licenses all at once. We can accept licenses when we feel like it.
Well, either that, or kick those in whenever we want. Say, okay, now we would like to begin with the delivery aspect. And, but we would vote as a council to say, we're ready for that, as a city. Because if we vote for all these right now, it's gonna be assumed, and then the pressure's gonna be on, while all these people are gonna be bugging the hell out of us. Okay, I know you guys are gonna do this, but when are you gonna be doing this, when are you gonna, it's like, like, wait until the, the, the city councils, uh, the temperature, or the temperament of the council is ready for these, because we've done enough of our own research, or we know that the community is okay with it, et cetera. I know that the storefront retail is the more direct, visible result of cannabis, the cannabis industry in our community. But can we do it in such a manner? I'm just saying, I'm not saying that it's gonna happen that way, but I'm just asking.
So the council can definitely always amend the ordinance, come back with, for instance, let's say that the council eventually end up adopting the ordinance with four of these.
Yes, that's what I'm trying.
Then later on, let's say, a year, two years later, you wanna amend the ordinance and include two more. That could be done, that could be done. However, the process that we're setting up here will have to be reformulated, I guess, because we have the consultants hired for this phase, it's a beginning phase for the city, and there's these processes involved, including licensing, and we have committees set up. Who, who's to say what the status of these committees and the application process will be two years later when we amend the ordinance, we may have to rehire the consultants.
It costs us more money if we choose to.
It may cost more money.
Would it be easier to, let's say, accept everything, I mean, choose to address one license at a time?
You could do that, that's an option that the consultant had just said.
Say in the first, I'm making up numbers, first two, you know, first year would be just storefront, and we're not gonna look at consumption until last.
Absolutely, and one jurisdiction that did that was the County of Riverside. So they did something like that, they took, they took each use kind of in phases. They didn't have caps, but they did have caps per year. So they said we would, the first year or two, we were gonna process X amount of applications as we get this process down, and then in subsequent years, we might increase that or allow them to come in as they do. And so that is definitely something that we can look in, just to, just to the, the city attorney's point. One of the things that we did recommend was having the comprehensive ordinance done, because it will be more cost-effective to do it that way, rather than bringing ba- bringing three or four ordinances or ordinance amendments, because the work is the same. So we wanted to first do all of them, and then put, bring it to the council to see if that's something that you were comfortable with, piecemealing it.
And having said that, just for clarification, the, the, some of the, the comments I heard from, through the mayor, is that you need more time to consider all these different uses. So we can definitely table Agenda Item Number Three for another meeting, which would delay the, the production of the ordinance, but that's at council's discretion. So if you need more time to consider these different types of license before you make a decision or vote on it, then you could definitely move and vote to table the item as well.
I'm just, I'm just asking the, the different options, and just because we just, say, to define the outline of what these will be, doesn't mean that we have to kick them all into, or maybe we don't kick specific ones later down, even though we have the, the, the structure for it.
To, to the chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, but, for example, if, if we said we're gonna go with the storefront first, but we would have also to give license for delivery and distribution, right?
We do.
Like, if we do, like, say, like, uh, somebody just mentioned about storefronts. But if you do a storefront, like the cannabis storefront, so you would have also include delivery license and distribution?
No.
No?
So each, each use is a separate license type.
Stand alone.
But how does that product get into that storefront?
It gets in there from a, another distributor, so.
But that distribution, that distributor has to have a license to operate in the city of Hawthorne.
They do not.
No?
No, she's talking about delivery.
Okay, so we.
Delivery and distribution are two different things.
So, so let me just clarify that. So if, as a storefront retailer, you can purchase product only from other licensed distribute, from a licensed distributor throughout the state. So you can purchase product from any distributor in the state. They're not required to have a license in your specific city. You only need a license in your specific city if you're operating out of that. So if I was running a distribution company, I would need a license in the city that I'm operating from. But I can supply products to any retailer in the state of California. So delivery, on the other hand, that's business to business. But delivery, on the other hand, is business to consumers, so it'll be like a pizza delivery service.
Correct.
Right, so, again, you can order, as it stands, from any pizza place that you'd like. They don't have to be in the city, but they deliver to the city. Under our proposed ordinance, those who are delivering to the city would need a license, as well as those delivering from the city.
From the city, okay.
So let me ask with that, so let's say we have a maximum of whatever, eight licenses, right? Let's say we give out all eight licenses to people who are based in the city. So a city, I mean, a delivery company based out of the city wouldn't be able to deliver into the city anymore.
Correct, and so one of, right, exactly. So we, that's why we had the two, the additional licenses designed or set aside for outside businesses. Another recommendation we discussed was not having a cap on those businesses, but we ultimately decided as the committee to put a cap on the number of delivery licenses in the city to give a fair competitive, or to give a competitive advantage to those inside the city. Since we're limiting outside retailers. So we would allow, right now, under the proposed guidelines, we would allow up to two outside, and the others would be internal. So, but again, all of these provisions, you know, my, our, our recommendation to the committee was to bring everything forward, have one comprehensive ordinance, and then from there, we can, the, the council may adopt a process by which we process these applications or issue licenses. So it's almost a two-part process, we have the ordinance in and of itself, and then we have the process by which we collect applications and score and, and issue licenses. And both of those things can be, that, we could have the ordinance with all the uses allowed. One of the things that the planning director did recommend is the CUP process. So some of those concerns you have regarding consumption lounges or even store, retailers, we could put, address all of those through site-specific conditions as well. So I just want to put that out there, we can look at them on a case-by-case basis, and lounges definitely would be one of those uses that require a conditional use permit. So they will go to your planning commission. We are gonna be looking at zoning compatibility and use compatibility. So all of those things would happen, like any other development application through our planning department.
Okay, so I think we kind of have a general, everybody here should do their job. And I know you, you put this together, so you kind of have an advantage. Just look, look at the details, come ready with questions, ask questions offline. Well, I think it's best to ask the questions here. I mean, we have enough information, I have like a series of questions I'm gonna probably come up with, and I appreciate you guys putting this together.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
There's some initial concerns, by the time we come back for the next meet, well, did we establish, since Councilmember colleague, uh, Councilmember colleague, Councilmember Montero's not gonna be here for the next meeting, that we would have, we established that we're gonna have the next study session at the following meeting? Can we, can we all agree that, just so we can have a full discussion with all members present?
I, I, I mean, I think we should do another session like this, separate from the council meeting, because how much time it may take.
Well, well, we're talking about whatever was planned for the next, for Tuesday, just push it back for when he comes back.
No, so what was planned for Tuesday is for us to be able to vote on something, I don't think we're even ready for that to happen.
We're not even ready for that to happen.
Yeah, I think we need to have another study session first, before it comes to the council meeting to vote on.
If we're gonna table item number three with the vote on the different types of licenses, then we can't come back with a draft ordinance or introduction on the, on the next meeting, because we need to know what the council is approving in terms of type of uses to be put into the ordinance.
So we have to have another study session.
If you want another study session, yeah, we could agendize for that, but.
We can't do this at a regular meeting, this discussion, no matter how long it takes.
We, we could, we could add another discussion action, I'm just like this, exactly, item number three is discussion action item in, in the next meeting, I don't know if the consultants will be.
But I just, not having our Councilmember colleague here to add, you know, his opinions and everything would be.
We can do study section, we can do study session on August second. If you.
I mean, that's fine with me, though, I mean, do, do you guys wanna do it specifically during the council meeting?
I think it would be correct, at this point, that we can align these things.
Wait, it's the next meeting after the twenty-sixth, I believe, is the ninth?
Is the ninth.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, the study session would be maybe Tuesday, the second, before our regular meeting on the ninth. That's what I'm proposing.
That would be a special meeting then.
Yeah. And the other thing that I would love to see a draft of these ordinance before even it, it comes to the first reading, because, because some of those order have some specific language that I would like to dissect before.
I think you'll be getting, we'll be getting something from you.
You'll get your package, right, yeah.
Yeah, just like we usually do, pink paper, pink paper.
Are you recommending August second, I'm not available that day?
Uh-oh.
We just need to make sure everybody's available, guys.
Well, if it's a special meeting, then, Mr. Mayor, you can just tell us, tell the staff the date that you want for the study session, and just agendize for that.
Okay, we'll just, we'll, we'll just try to get a, uh, we'll have to get a consensus to establish the meeting. So we'll end up contacting everybody's availability through the city attorney's office.
So whenever we get to that, we can, I'll move, we can table item number three, whenever we get to.
I'd like to move, uh, ta- table item number two till we, along with that, just so it can be paired up, okay?
I mean, I think we can, we can do item number two.
What's the opinion of our city council colleagues?
Let's get something, though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, to the chair, so, go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanted to really quick just thank the Cannabis Working Committee, the members of the board, our planning director, Mr. McLean, our Sergeant Craig, Sergeant Craig from Hawthorne Police, our city manager, Von Norris, our city attorney, Robert Kim. Just for their due diligence, and more importantly, bringing back great recommendations, suggestions, moreover, just being engaged, and learning a little bit more about the cannabis program on their own, as a city, as a whole, and working with other cities that provided information that was educational to myself and to the board. And so I just wanted to say thank you to them, and for their, again, for their work and their commitment. And I just wanted to make sure, me personally, provided a thank you, and to our consultants, who've been very instrumental, very informative, and more importantly, engaged, and very much experienced. So thank you to that. And Mayor, for your appointment, and for, again, your, your work on, on, on just assuring, again, the process. So thank you.
So can we just table both of those for the next meeting, or what's the desire of the city council?
I would agree, we could table.
You're talking about the item number two and three?
Item number two, we're, we're already moving three along, tabling it. If you guys want, we could do number two.
I think this is important, I, I, I think it's important, and more importantly, we're staying consistent, following, you know, what we've already worked on and continue will work on, so.
I don't know if we wanna propose those individually, but.
We'll just go ahead and, we'll just go ahead and move for this. So ad hoc committees for both licensing and for oversight? Mr. City Attorney?
What's the motion?
I'm not clear, so we're, we're going, moving forward with Item Number Two in terms of-
Yeah, we could just go ahead and give you the names.
Do we already table Item Number Three?
That one's tabled.
Okay.
All right. We have a five-member, five-member group for the ad hoc committee, and we have a five-member group for the Oversight Committee, for the Licensing Committee, one member from the City Council, and for the Oversight Committee, one member from the City Council. So for the Licensing Committee, and we had stated this before, so this is not like anything new, that we maximize the amount of involvement every council member would get. So for the Licensing Committee, Mr. City Attorney, should I just give you the five names?
Yes, you could nominate a chair for Licensing Committee and the Oversight Committee, and then it would have to be voted upon by the City Council.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, if you may, the Licensing Committee, when you're saying that, do you mean the Evaluation Committee? Evaluation.
Evaluation.
Is that a nomination or an appointment? What do we, what is it, Mr. City Attorney?
So for the chair, you're, you can, the mayor, under our ordinance, the mayor can select a member of the council to be the chair, and that has to be voted on by the rest of the City Council. And then you're, if you're gonna select specific individuals as members of that committee, you can do that as well, or you could just give a general description for approval for the council.
So I'd like to nominate Councilmember Valentine, to give her an opportunity to participate in this process as a chair. Von Norris, for Von Norris, Robert Kim, Felice, and Hawthorne Police Department Representative. So I'd make a motion for that.
And that's for the Evaluation or the Licensing Committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so just go ahead and vote, guys.
Vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
So for the purpose of making sure that we have involvement from councilmember colleagues, and since this might go past November, for the Oversight Committee-
I'm sorry, can you state again?
Oh.
Who, who else is on the Evaluation Committee?
Valentine, Valentine, Norris, Kim, Felice, Lopez, and an HPD representative, either the current member or somebody else.
Thank you.
And that'll still give an opportunity for the, you know, members of the council that were involved in the first process, absolutely enough, because of their involvement in it, everything they've gone through it, be able to give like points that we might be missing and advising the council. So for the Oversight, I would like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Patterson, City Attorney, an Assistant City Attorney, not necessarily the main attorney, Felice again, and two HPD representatives. If it's an Oversight and investigating, like the, you know, any misconduct or anything, I think it would be, it would give even further legitimacy if we have two Hawthorne Police Department Representatives, okay?
Excuse me, through the chair? Oh, I mean, I was up to-
You defer, you don't wanna accept it?
No, I'll accept it, totally fine. I was just curious if Councilmember Montero was gonna be on any of it.
We'll have a, we'll have him as your alternate for, for this one, in case something were to happen for you, to you, or unavailability.
So you're suggesting Six for the Oversight?
He would only be an alternate.
But you said two HPD, Felice, Assistant City Attorney?
And yourself.
Oh, not Robert Kim?
No.
Got it. I thought you said Robert Kim.
We need to take, huh?
Oh, okay, I thought you said Robert Kim plus-
No, because we like to take him out of process, just this is like already Oversight.
Got it.
It's gonna be bogged down. So I make the motion with Councilmember Montero as the alternate?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
So, is there anything further from, from staff?
No, there isn't, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Just, just for information, I'll come back with the resolution for both the committees. You may wanna think about the dates that these committees may meet and the timing, because I know for Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson, it's gonna be difficult if we were to meet regularly in person, as we did as a working committee, at eleven in the morning, and, you know, twice, two Thursdays a month, second and fourth Thursdays at eleven AM, or that's how we met as a working committee, so I know-
Mine would have to be Fridays.
I'm sorry?
Mine would have to be Fridays. I don't work on Fridays.
Yeah, and I purposely don't wanna be on any committee, I just, I'd just rather hear from my colleagues.
And it has to be taken into consideration that I will be out of town from August twenty-third through September fifth, so I don't think it should impact anything, but I wanna make sure you know that.
I would like to also say that if there was, for some reason, any reason that maybe you're, you, you need an alternate or something, or there's two alternates, that it would be chosen from this makeup of the council right here. Not after, not any newcomers to the City Council, after the election, whatever, if things were to change.
Why?
I don't know, I just, that's just my feeling, I just think that everybody here's been along the process a lot. And if you differ, that's fine, but that's my opinion, all right? So if there's anything further from council, nothing further from council, I might declare this meeting in close order at-
Seven fifty-six.
Seven fifty-six.